There's a lot of stuff.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Rule call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dakin. Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique. Seven present, two absent.
Let's please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda would be the proposed additions or deletions to the agenda. Do we have any? If not, we'll go to...
Mr. Mayor, I believe you had noted a couple additions to the agenda earlier.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Including the appointment of Nick Davis to the planning commission in addition to the other two appointments you're recommending. And then, under miscellaneous, we were going to acknowledge a donation from the Wilmer Hockey Association and briefly discuss a resolution entering into an agreement with MINDOT for an airport crack sealing project.
And those will be all listed under miscellaneous. We move to the consent items. Is there anything that would like to be added or subtracted?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mick mentioned another appointment. Is that on the consent agenda?
Well, no, it isn't. It was added to the consent agenda. This is Nick Davis. And you should have that in your papers.
Your Friday memo.
The Friday memo?
Either the Friday memo, or I think Audrey may have sent it out in the Friday memo, the information regarding Mr. Davis, who the mayor is recommending for an appointment to the planning commission.
Okay. You see it there?
Yep.
So that is included in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Along with Kerry Johnson.
Along with Kerry Johnson, and then a reappointment that we have as well. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Do we have any items that have been removed from the consent agenda?
No.
At that particular point, we'll... Mick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and guests. Tonight, we want to acknowledge and recognize Detective Timothy Manuel, who retired from our Wilmer Police Department this past January after serving 32 and a half years on the Wilmer Police Department. Tim actually moved to Wilmer late in his teens, graduated from Wilmer Senior High School, attended Ridgewater College, and got his Bachelor of Science degree in law enforcement from Northeast Missouri State College, which I think, at the time, was actually a pretty major accomplishment. Today, it's pretty standard that our law enforcement officers have achieved a four-year Bachelor of Science degree. He was kind of a leader in that respect on the Wilmer Police Department. He started his career early over in one of our neighboring communities, Attwater. Came to Wilmer in March of 1980. If some of you remember, under the leadership of Police Chief Lyle Geddards, that was a long time ago, and by my account, five chiefs he served under over his career with the city of Wilmer. And nowhere along that line did I ever hear a bad word about Tim Manuel. Always very complimentary and considered a leader in the department. I know he was well-respected among his peers in the law enforcement community and his fellow employees in the city offices as well. Detective Manuel started out as a police officer and then spent some time on the drug task force for us. And then, back in 1995, I believe, he was transferred into the detective unit, where he continued to serve until his retirement. Tim is dealing with some health issues and is not able to join us tonight, but his wife Andrea is with us. They still reside in Wilmer. They have three daughters and four granddaughters, as I understand it. I hope that Tim is able to watch tonight and is appreciative of the fact that we certainly appreciate his years of service with the city, and we wish him well and his family in the coming months. With that, I would invite Andrea to join me for a minute. I know that the mayor and council would like to present Tim with a token of their appreciation.
This is Manuel. I don't know you. I didn't... I don't know Tim. But I just want to say on behalf of the city that we're very, very proud of him and thank you and him for the service that he's given the city. And I would like, at this particular point, to present to you a token of appreciation of the city and the council. Please accept this and see to it that Tim gets it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
I think Andrea indicated to me that she had a big speech planned here tonight. Is that the case? About the mic is all yours.
On behalf of Tim and as his wife, I just want to say that he would have been here tonight if his health would have been available. At the present time, Tim is open to visitors at the house, but he can only go to his appointments and back home again. He's very ill. He was a proud man. He was very disappointed he couldn't make it to July. He wanted to be a part of the department, at least until July. Unfortunately, circumstance changed in December. So I just want you to know how grateful as a family, how proud of him as a wife I am. And serving your community was the best thing that he could ever have done for himself. So you lost a good man. There's many more on that department that are serving you. And keep him in your prayers, as we will keep yours and ours. Best wishes to all, and thank you.
Mick and Kevin, I have to turn to you. Did we get a hold of our councilperson?
We talked to his voice machine, sir. So at this point, we'll have to open the hearing, take all the public testimony we have. And I guess we can explain to the citizens who are wondering what will happen afterwards. But our city charter requires, to order an improvement project in the city, the affirmative votes of seven councilmembers. And we have a known absence in Councilmember DeBlique and an illness in another councilmember. So with six councilmembers, there will be no action tonight. Still have the hearing and take all the testimony from the citizens that are here.
At that... At this particular moment, then, I would like to open the hearing. Holly, if you'd like to come up and explain to us about the improvements, street improvements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. I'm going to be presenting the 2011 Street Improvements Public Hearing. The position statement, it is the position of the city of Wilmer to seek the input of all interested students and affected members of the public in the city's decision-making process. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to review and explain the proposed improvements, the estimated cost, and to obtain input from all interested parties. The agenda for tonight is as follows. We have opened the hearing. I will give an explanation of the proposed improvements, and then it will be open for comments. There are three key areas that I'd like to speak about, that is our reconstruction, our overlay, and our miscellaneous projects. Here's a map showing all the improvements proposed for this year, and I will be going through each one of these in detail. We have about 1.53 miles of reconstruction, as well as overlay, a couple of miscellaneous projects, and a street lighting project. First, I'd like to start with the reconstruction. The typical section is 10 inches of gravel and 4 inches of base. Typically, there is fabric that is needed. We also do install tile and tile services, remove and replace curb and gutter where needed. This year, we have nine streets included in our reconstruction program. And as I said earlier, it's about 1.53 miles. Here's a picture of what a typical street would look like that would need reconstruction. Sixth Avenue Northwest. The length of this is .08 miles. This was reconstructed originally in 1978. It has 10 inches of base and 4 inches of bituminous currently. It was rated at a 5 out of 100 scale. We have done maintenance on this street in the past. Five frost boils in 2008, one in 2010. The surface of this street is weathered and worn. We have cracking, alligator and block cracking throughout the surface. And the pavement is sagging, rough, rutted, and potholed. The next is several streets in the Voss Park area. These include 33rd Street, 31st Street, 3rd Avenue, 2nd Avenue, 1st Avenue, and Voss Park Drive. These streets were originally constructed between 1978 and 1980. There is 4 inches of base and 3 inches of bituminous on these roads. The ratings range from a 35 to a 40 for 2nd Street, 1st Street, and 31st, and 15 to a 30 on 3rd, 33rd, and Voss Park. The pavement shows advanced signs of wear. There's been numerous repairs, patches, and large areas of cracking. The next project is Gorton Avenue Northwest. This is a state aid project. We'll be using state aid funds on this portion of the project, originally constructed in 1922. This includes 4 inches of cast iron water main, 8-inch clay tile sanitary sewer, 12-inch storm at the 11th Street intersection, and an 8-inch concrete road. Currently, there is 2 inches of bituminous over that 8 inches of concrete. This had a rating of 35. There is advanced weathering and wear, block cracking, rutting, surfaces uneven, and it requires yearly patching and maintenance. As part of this project, we will be installing new sanitary sewer, 8-inch water main, replacing curb and gutter, and adding additional storm sewer at the 13th Street intersection. We're replacing this section of road with 12 inches of base and 4 inches of asphalt. We estimate that there are 13... or, excuse me, that there are 16 of 32 water services that will be replaced because they are still lead pipe services. The next street is 11 and 1/2 Avenue Southeast. This was originally constructed in 1976 and currently has 4 inches of base and 3 inches of bituminous. It was rated a 30. We have also done several repairs on this route. The next is 15th Avenue Southwest. This is also a state aid project. It was originally constructed in 1986. It does have a rating of 70, which is one of the better ratings that you will see in our program this year. However, we do get quite a bit of water that runs over the surface of the road during rainstorms. And we are hoping to alleviate that by raising the grade of this street section. This photo was taken, looking from 22nd Avenue, looking to the east, taken in April of 2010. As you can see, the water is coming over the road, which is quite typical. The next piece... The next section of our street program is the overlay projects. Typically, we do an inch and a half or 2 inches of milling and paving. There are four segments of overlay included in this year's project for approximately 1.53 miles. We will replace curb and gutter as needed and correct damaged areas. And then, we will do the overlay of an inch and a half or 2 inches of paving. The first street I'd like to talk about is 7th Street Southwest from 19th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue. This is about a half a mile. This was originally constructed in 1980. We are proposing to mill off an inch and a half and pave an inch and a half. This is a section of roadway we did last year when we did water main replacement. And the overlay now, this year, is done in conjunction with Candy Ojai County. Becker Avenue Southeast from 1st Street to Lakeland Drive. This is about 1 mile of road stretch. It was constructed... It was reconstructed in 1986. We are proposing to mill 2 inches and pave 2 inches. The surface has showed some weathering. This had a rating of 60. And I'm showing again Becker Avenue from 1st Street to Lakeland because this portion, we will be replacing water main from 6th Street to 13th Street. And we'll be replacing that with an 8-inch water main. This was requested by the Wilmer Municipal Utilities for water main replacement. And again, Becker Avenue. This is another section of Becker Avenue, the 13th Street section to Lakeland Drive. Again, another mill and overlay, 2 inches of mill and 2 inches of overlay. So we've just broken down Becker Avenue into three separate segments to talk about this evening. The next area I'd like to discuss is our miscellaneous projects. There are two miscellaneous projects I'd like to bring to your attention. And that's the 22nd Street Southwest Path and the 1st Street Bridge Deck Rehabilitation. Those are the two main ones I'm going to talk about tonight. We also will have some storm water improvements, crack sealing, and our seal coating, which we do on an annual basis. The 22nd Street Path is an 8-inch bituminous path proposed from 15th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue. And I don't have a picture of the Bridge Street Deck Rehabilitation, but that's been something that's kind of been on our project list for many years, and we're hoping to get that included in this year's project. There is some maintenance that needs to be done, some seals need replaced, and some deck rehabilitation. Now, this is kind of where our project schedule is. Tonight is the improvement hearing. We're proposing a bid letting of mid-April. And then, once we get the bids, we will have the assessment hearing in mid-May, hoping to award the project in mid-June, begin construction in July, and be substantially complete in November with the first course of paving. The estimated costs at this time, these are just based on... Sorry about that. Based on estimates, is about $2.4 million. And this is a graphic we like to show typically each year to show kind of the trends that we are seeing with some of our street reconstruction. We are showing the excavation aggregate and curb and gutter costs have risen slightly in 11 years, while costs for driveways and bituminous paving have doubled in some cases. The last five years, there's been about an average of a 3% increase per year in bituminous paving and concrete driveway costs. In 2008, the driveways were down, as you can see. At this... Based on estimates, our reconstruction assessment estimate is $67.50 a foot, and our overlay is $25 a foot. However, that is a high estimate. Last year, we were proposing a $67.50 estimate for reconstruction. And I believe the assessments came in around $55 to $56 a foot. At this time, I will open it up to any questions, and I'd be happy to answer those that have questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Holly? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm Arlen Rasner.
Can you step up to the...
Arlen Rasner, 915 East Becker. And she's answered a few of my questions, but one thing that wasn't addressed there, there was something talked about a tile system in the letter. And I don't know what that is. I heard it's got something to do with the sump pumps. They're going to bring it up to about the sidewalk area.
The tile system, it goes along the curb and gutter, and that is for drainage. And it gives you the opportunity to connect your sump pump lines into that tile system, and then it would go to the storm sewer, rather than just outletting your sump pump line directly onto the street or into your yard.
How deep is that going to be? I was told it's not going down very deep, so it's going to freeze in the wintertime. If there's any sump pumps running in the wintertime, then it's worthless.
We haven't had an issue with that in the past. I believe it's about 18 inches deep.
I think frost goes below 18 inches in the street, but... Are there any sidewalks going to be replaced in this project? There are broken sidewalks, I know, on Becker Avenue. There's four of them in my lot alone. They're cracked and are heaving.
Yes, there are sections of sidewalk that will be marked for replacement. Once we get the snow removed, we will have our staff go out and mark those sidewalk sections for replacement. Not the entire sidewalk, just the broken areas.
Is anything going to be done with the storm water that we get on Becker Avenue and Roberts? If we get 1 inch of rain within an hour, that will flood every time.
Anytime we do a reconstruction project or an overlay project, we look for opportunities to improve the drainage. So on Becker Avenue, if there is an opportunity to improve the drainage, we will look at that in great detail.
We get drainage that comes from the cemetery, which is about 6th Street, I think, from Ed Davis down to what would be Highway 12, drains down to that corner. It comes from 13th to 14th, and then also comes off of Lincoln School. All seems to congregate right in that corner. We've had many cars that flooded out, sit in the middle of the street there. So I'd like to have that, if it's possible, to have something done with storm water in that area. And will there be any trees removed in this project that you think of?
No trees have been identified for removal at this time, no.
And then, probably my last and biggest issue that I have is when we have this new overlay put on there, will there be some sort of speed control considered, and also truck traffic? Becker Avenue probably has the highest rate of speeders on in this city, I think. It's not unusual to see a car come down there at 60 miles an hour. Can you attest to that, Kevin? He's a neighbor down there, and maybe it's him that leaves to go get down to a city council meeting or something. I don't know.
I won't touch that one.
But no, but Becker Avenue, if you're going to put a nice overlay on that thing, it will become more of a speed area. A lot of people buy... Use Becker Avenue to come down Lakeland, Becker, and go down to 1st Street, rather than taking Highway 12, which I understand is probably up for some reconstruction of some sort. But they don't like to go the bypass and make that whole little turnaround on Highway 12 to get onto 1st Street South. We've had trucks that have taken off of Highway 12, come down one of the streets, get on Becker, go down, and then get onto 1st Street. So there is an issue that I have with that, and it's pretty...
Is that something that you can address, Holly?
As far as the speed on Becker Avenue, I can't really address that. That would be more of the chief's area.
He's had a few of them.
And as far as truck traffic, I believe that there are other truck routes for the trucks to take, and that's something we would have to monitor.
One come down there just the other day, and it was a food service truck of some sort, a big semi. He's down there on his cellphone, driving down Becker, heading from the west to the east, heading for Lakeland.
Okay. We will keep an eye on that and...
But other than that, I think you've answered my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could address his concerns regarding traffic, that certainly would fall under our concern also, and we can address that. I think our first method would probably be put out the speed trailers, just to warn people. But that would not address the truck traffic, and that we would handle separately. But we would address both the truck traffic on that street and the speeding, if those become issues. That's not a problem at all for us.
Thank you very much. Does that answer your question? Did you want to speak to?
Craig Hanson. I live on 11 and 1/2 Avenue Southeast. And I just had one question. I never felt the street was really bad, but last spring, they had a company that did underground cable, and they had an awful big truck and a heavy trailer. And when he came down the street, he totally ripped the street up from one end to the other. And I was just curious if they ever hold those guys responsible for wrecking the street.
I can't answer that, but I bet you Holly can.
You said it was one particular truck that went down, 11 and 1/2 Avenue? Again...
He wrecked other streets around that area too that day.
Again, it's something we would have to monitor, and I...
Most of the neighbors had called in to the different city people that they knew and reported it, you know, as they were doing cable, you know? But that thing was huge. He just wrecked the street. So I figured that's why they're after... To redo ours, because he ripped it up.
We do have a plan in place, a five-year plan. This is in a street that just came up because of one particular incident. We base it on several things: the condition of the street, if there's other projects, the ratings, other areas of the neighborhood that may be done. So it's not based on one particular event. It's our street program, which we have a five-year program put together, is based on several different criteria. But something we can...
Do you have to take that into consideration about those guys that are wrecking the street then, or they don't say anything to them?
Well, we address it if we know about it, yes. We will contact them and direct them to a particular truck route.
I appreciate they'd hear something about that, you know, about that cable company that was doing the underground. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any other people that... John?
I just have a concern. I live on 1st Avenue Northwest.
John, you got to say your name and your address.
Oh, I'm John Devonport, 3033 1st Avenue Northwest. And I have a concern, and it's with the slight jog from County 5 up to the second cul-de-sac. There's a slight jog in the road. I live right there, so I get to watch it every day. Eastbound traffic coming downhill and going towards County 5 inevitably end up in the westbound lane. And it's not particularly a problem now, but it certainly is in the summertime when we have children running all over the place. You guys see the... Can I go up there and...
There's a red... You could shoot it from there, John, if we can... No, that's...
Who do I push?
Oops.
Oh, we have this.
No, no.
You ever was very good at this.
Pointer off. Go get the pointer and pull it up. We're getting you some help, John.
Okay. Thirty, yeah, 33, 33rd Street, you're coming down the hill, okay? And you see that little, come down further, go by 31st, right there. This is a kind of at the bottom of a, of a incline and people are coming pretty fast. They're going, and they end up in the westbound lane. My question is, will there be some kind of a, of a setup to mark the eastbound and westbound lanes? Either at, at the least, a marker of some sort, a yellow line, whatever, more particularly or probably better would be some kind of an island from maybe 31st Street to beyond the, beyond the... That's, that's all I have. I'm not expecting an answer. Probably you have not thought of this yet.
No. We'll take a look at it.
Will you?
Yeah, but we don't typically would stripe residential streets.
Stripe, yeah.
The island becomes another matter.
I, I invite you all to come and see it. It's inevitable. Like nine and 1/2 cars out of 10. I've even seen some police cars come down.
Thank you, John. Anyone else like to, yes sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Troy Anderson. I live on 401 Charlotte Street Southeast. My question is, how does that work on a corner lot for paying your assessments?
Go ahead. The corner lots will be, first off, only assessed now on the address side and then if there's an opportunity where there's an extra large corner lot, we average things out so that it's more in line with the lot sizes inside the street.
Okay, 'cause I'm not even done paying for Charlotte yet. You guys are gonna redo Becker now?
Oh boy, you should. We have had that policy in excess of 10 years, so 10 years should've done it.
Well, it'll be up, it'll be up this year, but my point is, is, I mean, how much of a hit am I gonna take for owning a corner lot? I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not fair to the other people, but...
Well, your, your address is Charlotte.
My address is Charlotte, yes.
Right, so we're fixing Becker.
Yeah, I know.
So you will not be assessed?
Okay, where...
No, you, no, stop. You're getting a notice because we always notify everybody where construction is going by them.
That's, that's just my question because I've been told both ways.
No.
You don't pay for it, you do pay for it, whatever, I just wanna clarify that...
On a Becker Avenue crisscross of Charlotte, the Becker Avenue side is assessed, Charlotte is not, but you are notified, that's why you're getting it, 'cause construction will come by your house.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Colvig, my concern is around Sixth Avenue Northwest with the reworking of that and whether or not there's gonna be a, a drainage tile or any of that work done. And I would appreciate if you could send me your engineering drawings of what you're proposing to do. And then also if there is one, you'd probably need an easement, depending on where the water's going and all that kinda thing, because it ends up going off the end of Sixth Avenue Northwest and we also own that property, but you would need an easement if you're gonna go across that way. So I'd appreciate more, just more information, because, you know, this notice is the first I've seen or heard anything about this, so if you could just send me the prints or, and I've got an email that you can send up to me, if that would be fine.
I can, I can send those to you when we have them prepared.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Where do we go from here, Kevin? Well, sir, that's the action for tonight. Because of our limitation, we will then just put this on the agenda in two weeks.
Well, there's opportunity here though for discussion by the council if you have questions.
Now, am I clear, Mick? Is there a, a, a time issue here on this one? That that has to be done at a certain time?
No, but by not ordering the improvements now, of course, we're just delaying it and, pushing everything out closer to the estimated completion dates. But Kevin's right, I mean, absent seven affirmative votes, we cannot order the improvements. That doesn't preclude you from having discussion about any of the issues raised by the audience members or asking staff questions about any concerns you might have with the proposed improvements. And then some, and then we'll have to place it on the, the March 7th agenda for a vote to proceed.
And I do open it up to the council if there's any questions or discussion, Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Holly, on 15th Avenue Southwest, you, you said there's gonna be a grade increase there. Do we know how, how much we're gonna raise it there? Is it a foot, 16 inches, or is there an approximation?
Two to two and 1/2 feet.
Two to two and 1/2 feet?
Yes. Basically, we're making, we're going to make the low point at that street the high point.
Okay, makes sense, thank you. Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Holly, I wanna follow up on Mr. Davenport's suggestion of, of a stripe on that First Avenue. He had talked to me about this several years ago and I, I did go out there and that probably is an accident waiting to happen. What would be wrong with just putting a yellow stripe or something down the middle so that people have some bearings so that they know they're not drifting across? Is that totally against good engineering or why couldn't we do that?
There's, really, the only reason not to do that is it's not what we've typically done for us or other residential streets and then that adds additional maintenance for our striping program, but as far as bad engineering judgment or anything like that, there wouldn't, that wouldn't be an issue, no.
Well, I wish you would consider that, please.
We will take a look at it.
Councilman Adams?
Yes, thank you, Holly. I have a question, concerns on Becker Avenue. Now, right, right now, what is the load capacity of that existing road, the way it is now with the minimal base that we have down there? Do we know right offhand?
Um, give me one second.
Built in 86 Millen overlay, requesting two inches.
Yeah, currently, it has, you know, a six inches of aggregate on it and four inches of bituminous. I believe the, the rating on that, I believe it's a 910 road.
Okay, and by, and by redoing this street, are we gonna be increasing that capacity some with a bit, better base?
No, we're just doing a Millen overlay on this section of road.
So as far as trucks moving down that route, there shouldn't be any problem, it's still gonna be in violation if they exceed the capabilities of that road, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, that was my question, thank you very much.
Yeah, 15th Avenue, I may have talked to you about this, but forgot. Here, the, the low point is where the water sits now.
Yes.
Is it just going to be one high point and then drain to the east and the west, or is there gonna be multiple drainages and where does it drain to?
We are going to add some catch basins and increase the capacity so that the pond that's located north of 15th Avenue will hold more water and improve the drainage that we have currently leaving the pond. So we won't be adding any additional drainage to either direction, we'll just be improving it and redirecting it to the pond.
So, is it just going to be one peak and two lows, or is there gonna be more than that?
Correct, it will just be making the low point to the high point, yes.
That's it?
In general terms, yes.
Is that low point close to the residential area or is it backed off?
No, because we are only going prior to where the new Roosevelt Road is, is our limits and the residential doesn't start really until after the new Roosevelt Road, as you can see the limits on the, on the drawing. Our Roosevelt Road comes in...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right about...
Roosevelt Road comes in right with the limit?
Right in this area.
Okay.
So we are only doing this piece right here.
Okay, that, that relieves my concern, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Holly, on the sump pump lines, when they have sidewalks, they have to bore under the sidewalk to hook in their line, or how does that work?
Yes, I believe that is the case, yes.
And that's usually good from April to November, depending on the winter?
The, the sump pump lines can be connected year round, or April to November prime, as well. I mean, we haven't had a lot of issues with freezing of those lines that are connected to our drain system.
Even in January or February?
No.
Really? Okay, thank you.
The, the lines we have problems with are freezing are ones that aren't connected to those, in-street tile lines.
Any other questions, council? And shall we move right into the next hearing? Yes, sir. Next public hearing is with the Western Interceptor Facilities Plan and Ms. Rhonda Ray from Donahue Associates.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Wilmer's staff and citizens of Wilmer. Tonight, we are here, I am here to talk to you about the Western Interceptor Public Hearing for the Draft Facility Plan. Tonight's presentation will include the history of the interceptor, the draft facility plan, the program budget, a resolution to adopt the facility plan, the next steps, which will include the options for financial funding and a summary of what we discussed tonight. The history starts with basically even before 2000, it's in 2005, when the council started to plan for the new wastewater treatment plan. The May 2006 facility plan identified where the sewers existed, where the future capacity was going to be, which included the Western Interceptor, and that was adopted in May 2006. The council then, the city then completed a comprehensive collection system, which prioritized and recommended future collection systems in the city. The recommended routes also included the Western Collector Interceptor. I'll go into that detail a little farther later on. City then moved forward with hiring Donahue to do the preliminary and final design of the Western Collector and authorized bidding at that time, or authorized the contract for bidding. From that, we held the first workshop where we reviewed all the information we had on the Western Collector. We looked at alternative routes and we selected a preferred route and after the meeting, information came forward and the reroute was re-chosen. The next steps in the history included doing, amending Donahue's contract then with this new alignment and we eliminated the bidding out of the project at the time. The second workshop then was held, which confirmed this final alignment and we moved forward with the design of the Western and the Ortonlet at that time. An EIW was submitted to PCA in January of this year and a third workshop has been held to review right-of-way easement, acquisition, and financing of the project. Back to the original facility plan for the new wastewater treatment plant. This workshop, we start off with having workshops just to identify what areas needed to be serviced for the new plant. How much was Wilmer gonna grow and look at that areas? Within that, the, we had representatives from Wilmer's Public Works, Engineering, Planning, Wastewater, we had Candy County, Candy County members there, Green Lake Sanitary Sewer District, and the Minnesota Pollution Agency, looking at what would be the actual footprint and how much should you design the new plant for. This shows you from the existing facility plan, the existing sewer areas in Wilmer. And it identifies that the city of Wilmer in Eagle Lake was your existing sanitary sewer district and we also looked at the areas, it shows the distribution of the land use, your residential, commercial, industrial, and government districts within that area. Then looked on to, okay, we know what the existing, which is that dark blue line, let's see if I can do the laser. So this was again the existing that we looked at on the previous slide. Now, what's the city gonna do next? We looked at what we called a future service area. This is area to be anticipated during the facility's use, useful lice, which is the year 2030, and that's the light green, I kinda, laser on. So it comes up here, goes out, comes up around, goes south side of the lake, down and over, out, and down. And then we anticipated what would be a planned use, which is to get this purplish color, goes way out and up and around. Basically, this area north is gonna be serviced by the, I just said it a minute ago. I gotta go back to my notes, my mind's gone blank. The Green Lake Sanitary Sewer District, the purple line comes out and around. So that was what you could anticipate for service by the city of Wilmer for sanity sewers within 50 years. This was also based on the city using a 1% population growth. The Wilmer Service Map shows this growth and expansion and we considered where we would be looking at for the span, expansion. Basically, State Highway 40 with the new development of the airport, there was a future growth area, the west end of Highway 12, the east end of Highway 12, so you can see how they both go out. The area to the north and west of Foot Lake is, was currently experiencing residential development and patterns which exceeded, and we expected that to continue and not accelerate growth in that area. Expansion to the southeast of Wilmer was truly not looked, was truly not expected to do based on high groundwater, wetlands, and surface water features. That doesn't make it really great for development. With the relocation, the Wilmer Municipal Airport to the west, limited commercial growth consisting of travel and support-related services for the airport is expected to be near the new airport. The existing airport property will be redeveloped with roads, sewer, water, storm water, miscellaneous utilities for over 500, 400 acres of future industrial land. To date, the utilities are all available except for the sanitary sewer. The existing County Road 5, south through the former airport, into the, and will continue down to the future 223 interchange. With that, we could, the city believes that there would be commerce and residential growth in this area. The growth area, again, this is just showing how we divided it up, then into the existing service areas are numbered 1 through 17 and how does those, those all then, how the, this pipe area, we call them pipe sheds and it comes to the waste treatment plant. We looked at what the capacity in each of those were, we looked at the capacity of the featured areas and the planned areas. Knowing that the lakes areas north of Wilmer is experiencing significant new growth and development in this area, Wilmer plans to include that area except for, as I said, along County Road, it'll go all the way up to County Road 27, which will be then serviced by Green Lake. by Green Lake north of there. One of the factors that may accelerate the need for sanitary sewer in this area, in the lake areas, is that private septic systems that are failing or out of compliance with regulatory standards. A study done by Hawk Creek staff found that 75% of the septic systems within Hawk Creek watershed are not in compliance. The facility plan looked at ways to alleviate some flow problems the city has. Basically, by the existing, whoops. Can you go back, please? The existing flows are the green areas, so basically, all the flow of the sanitary sewers come up to the existing plant. And the way it operates right now, it then connects to the Southern Interceptor and goes out to the new wastewater treatment plant. The blue, the pink areas are the proposed, this pink and this pink is the Western. It'll bring that area and come straight down to the interceptor and out to the plant, thereby relieving flow in this area where we have some capacity problems. This I'll talk about later with the Orton Blad. Now we come to the Collection Comprehensive Plan. That was done in June 2006, and it reviewed all these service areas, reviewed your existing conditions of your collection system, and reviewed the condition of the 16 cities lift stations, including Eagle Lake's nine lift stations, and proposed recommendations for improvements. The following areas were concerned, were identified in the system. As I said, this part of the city, basically from where Jenny O's plant is, coming over to the existing treatment, has a capacity problem during peak flows. In 2005, a flow monitoring program recorded that this sewer was surcharging after a six-inch rain. Future collection systems that route flow away from this area and will help alleviate that surcharging. Lakeland was also identified as having future problems once this whole area gets developed, that does not have enough capacity. And future flows from the north and the west of Foot Lake, if they're not routed through the Western, basically the lift station here, which we call Highway 12 Lift Station, it is at, has, it's at peak flow right now, and by redirecting the flows that come from up here, which is your Westwood Court Lift Station, and these flows directly to here, this is D, D was identified at that time, which is now the Western Collector in this route, that would actually alleviate some of the problems. Also, in this area up here, the city has clay pipes, which causes a lot of bi- and I, and this will help with that in the future, to help alleviate the flow problems at that lift station on Highway 12. So the recommendation was to construct the Western Interceptor and collect flows from the areas west of Foot Lake, the Wilmer Area Airport Project, and portion of the future service areas located west of the city. Eventually, flows from the airport and Highway 12 Lift Station could be redirected to the Western Collector. Flows from the airport station could be conveyed by a gravity sewer, allowing the lift stations to be taken out of service. The Western Interceptor route is routed through Brook, Valley Brook Estates, Hidden Valley Estates, and the Airport Redevelopment Project. After the council approved the contract for the preliminary and final design, Workshop 1 was held in September 2009, with city staff from Public Works, wastewater treatment plant, and the planning department. The purpose of the workshop was to review pros, proposed sewer alignments, what the alternatives were for the Western Interceptor, the service areas and the proposed flows in this area, and the potential lift station connections that could, that could be reviewed and looked at. It was agreed that the Western Interceptor would be sized to accommodate flows from the Country Club area, Radio Park, Westwood Court, Airport, and Highway 12 Lift Station, flows from this new development, north and west of Foot Lake, and the Airport Redevelopment Area, western portion of the city, including future service areas. The airport, again, the airport lift station could be eliminated once the gravity sewer was constructed. Sewers could also serve the southeast area, the airport, which already has development in it, which is not being, oh, I'm doing it again, that's okay, which is over here. But can you send me back one? At the second workshop, then, oh, I'm, that one, I'll stick to the laser. We looked at three routes, coming up 55 here, and we came all the way up to what is future trot avenue southwest, and then we brought it up, this is the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Power Easement, and connecting to the city's sewers up here off of 33rd. The second route we looked at, again, came up 55, came across on 40th, straight to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Electric Route, and the final route that was selected after work, at the first workshop, was through here. Now we've moved after the second workshop, over to this area. The reason that we moved to what's, this is County Road 5 and 30th, going to trot and up, was to meet the needs of existing development that's going to happen in the short term. What is a facility plan? Facility plan must address these issues. Must complete a description and evaluation of existing wastewater treatment systems and problems that require correction. The existing wastewater flows, note again that that was done in the original facility plan, back in 2006. Future flows, that was also identified in the 2006 facility plan. Various treatment alignments, we've looked at some in the, again, the facility plan, the comprehensive plan, and now with the two workshops. And the reason for choosing the select alignment. Pollution control, we have to submit the facility plan to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. They have suggested that this needs to be a modified facility plan, not a complete facility plan, since some of this has already been looked at, and we're really not doing treatment. Why do we do a facility plan? Well, state rules say you need to, and it needs to be done by a professional engineer, and it needs to be approved by the Commissioner of PCA, if you want to use state funding. The purpose of the Western Interceptor is to implement the future connections identified in the 2006 planning document, and to make those improvements to the conditions out there, and to satisfy the requirements of the state rule. Summary of the Western Interceptor is, there's approximately 1,300 linear feet of gravity sewer, there'll be many structures that range in depth from 18 to 38 feet, there'll be jacking and boring of pipes over 2,000 feet, approximately 200 feet of residential reconstruction, and 250 feet of rural township roads will be reconstructed. We've already talked about the project location, but again, just to refresh, we are connecting up at 33rd Street Northwest and First, to the existing, and it'll run down then, the utility easement, come across trot, run parallel to 5th, once we get across 40th, State Highway 40, we will then go down the center, oh, no, we'll stay on the, this isn't here, once we get down to 19. Then we'll go down the center of the Township Road.
Are you running on the west side?
We are running on the west side, we're running on the west side of the County Road 5. On the Township Road, we're going down the center. There is over 700 manhole structures in this project, erosion control, and there will be wetland restoration. I think we've talked a lot about the existing conditions. There is sanitary sewer, we said, that was up in, oop, I keep pushing the wrong button, I'm sorry. Up in drainage, the drainage area 4, and the sewer basin 3, we do have already existing conditions. This is clay pipe in this area, the lift station here that's in this area 4, which is your Westwood Court, does have capacity problems. This will, mainly because the capacity problems at the Highway 12 Lift Station. By rerouting all this sewer to not go into the Highway 12 Lift Station, it'll alleviate the capacity problems of the, this lift station and the Highway 12 Lift Station. And again, as we said before, the airport lift station can be connected to this bi-gravity sewer pipe and eliminate that lift station completely.
So you eliminate two lift stations?
No, we're only eliminating one.
The airport?
The airport. We'll reduce the capacity coming to the Highway 12 Lift Station, so it won't be taking as much. You can eventually, if you wanted to redo it with the sewers, I did it again, I keep going for the laser, if you redid the sewers on the east side here, and in this area, you could redirect 12, but you'd have to, that's a lot more construction than I think is necessary, and I don't see that the pipes are that bad a capacity for the city right now. And you'll eliminate the problem, or at least relieve the problem, by reducing the flow coming to Highway 12 Lift Station.
Highway 12 Lift Stations right next to the Coke, right?
Yep.
And the Western Interceptor comes across on the west side-
On the west side of it.
Of 5.
Of 5. But again, this area 4 and this area 3 all come down to that lift station. So that'll all come off of that lift station.
Okay. So the only, the only thing that that lift station will be serving?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can, the only, is, is basically on the east side here, this little area here, and there's some drainage here that comes up to it. This shows you actually the full service area that the Western will be able to take. The existing basins, as I mentioned, was 3, 4, and 6, and the future basins is this future F1, the future 9, and portion of, half of F10 and half of F20. Those were all futures, systems that could be added, once the city annexes them. Basically, this is a bunch of engineering, basically showing that the capacity of the pipe, and that we're designing, so the first segment, basically that comes from the north, will end up with designing with an 18-inch pipe, is what it's saying here, and that this capacity of the next session gets us to another 18-inch pipe. This here of 5.3 CFS gets us to a 24-inch pipe down here, and the full system from the north end to the south will be at 7.8 CFS. What we're looking at then next is how much is coming from the southern interceptor to that point, and that's 22 CFS, for a total of 29. The capacity that you have right now in the southern interceptor by the pipe size is 31, so this all is basically telling you that you have capacity.
Excuse me, Rhonda, I know that we have a lot of technical information here, and we may be overwhelming folks, and I asked-
I skipped through that fast.
I asked you to be thorough, and you certainly, you certainly were providing a lot of information, but early on in Rhonda's presentation, I asked her to take us back in time and, and try to reestablish what led up to the decision to include the Western Interceptor in our sanitary sewer service system. And I think it would be helpful if we could just maybe skip that technical stuff, move to your project summary, and talk just a little bit about the budget, and what some of the next steps are. Because the bottom line here, is with all this information, what, all the council is being asked to do tonight is authorize the facilities plan, or adopt the facilities plan, and authorize submission to, is it the Pollution Control Agency, or the-
Yeah, the Pollution Control Agency.
So that we get on a funding list, and then we don't, that's to say that we don't necessarily have to make a decision tonight to proceed with the project. But we didn't want the project to go by the wayside, because people kind of forgot over the last five or six years what the real purpose was. So, sorry for interrupting.
No, thanks, Max. Well, quickly, I even went past the slide, but I'll just tell you, is your, the, the reason for the project was to relieve capacity problems in the north and the west, redirecting flow, and to also reach, be able to do future development by the city. Now the budget. Basically, the engineering's $195,000, the constructions $320,000, the total construction costs, that was, I said, that was a construction services, 320, construction is basically, you might as say 4 million. The total budget comes to 4.5 million, with land and legal at $258,700, a contingency of a little under $200,000, for a total project estimated at $4.9 million, $4,937,109. This project was, part of the facility plan is to say, what, how do your sewer rates work? Well, the sewer charges were included in the rate structure that you adopted in 2009. Also, in your city ordinance, under Chapter 16, for sanitary sewer, you have a connection fee for sewers, that, this is to recapture cover, this is again, isn't an interceptor, it's not the collector system, so anybody, for everybody to recover the cost for providing that interceptor line, so that you can then build up the rest of the system to it. You look at basically, what your ordinance has is a connection fee of $2,435, which is this number right here. If you, if you developed all those areas, we estimate that there will be 2,820 connections, bringing you a total of $6,867,178. That is above the project cost, but again, you think of the debt service, you're going to have to repay also, so that wasn't included in the project estimate. This is the resolution that, to bring this project forward to PCA, it needs to be adopted by the council. I don't need to read it right now, I can come back to it if you want. I'm going to go on to what's next. Well, we need to submit the facility plan to PCA the latest March 4th. The final design will move forward and be completed by May 2011, we hope. PCA will review the facility plan and approve it by June 30th, if not sooner than that, 2011. The approved financial plan, the latest that the council can look at how you're going to finance this to move forward with the project, is July 5th, 2011. That's if we go forward with bidding the project, which we were proposing to do by July 5th, and we're getting the contracts August 15th, and completing the construction by June 2013. Quick little summary of the finance, again, I said that the total project is around 4.97 million. We've, we've identified funding from- We've identified funding from PFA loans, grants, the local option sales tax, sewer revenue, identified three options in the next steps. Basically, here's the first option, is 100% local sales tax for the construction. The second option is to only use the local option sales tax in the industrial park area, and the third option is a 50-50 construction split between the PFA funding and the local option sales tax. Here's how they look at 100% construction costs and local option sales tax, that's the three, I'll say $4 million in constructions there. Right now, the design engineering's being paid for out of wastewater operating funds. We use PFA funds for the construction engineering, land and legal, PFA or WIF, if we can get it, and if not, there's some funds that PFA won't pay for, and so that would be out of the operation budgets. But those are the breakdowns of the project. If you do 100% from local sales option tax, this is, if you do just in the industrial park, what you're looking at, so then the cost of construction in just the industrial park area is 1.2 million, and the 2.7 of constructions there, and the split out again of the funds. And the third option is a 50-50, so again, construction costs is split 50-50, but knowing that PFA will only pay for 24,000, we then have this either under law, the local option sales tax, or the land and legal, and then we just split the money so that it became a 50-50 project between the cost, funds. What's next? To prove the plans, and after, after deciding if that's one of those options you choose to go with, or something else that may become available, under our attention, go forward with bidding in July, award the contract in August, and completes construction in June 2013. Basically, there's a quick summary of what I did tonight, and with that, I'll just move to, do you have any questions? Or open it to the public?
I do open it up to the public for questions for Rhonda. John?
John Sullivan, 508 Southeast 13th Street, Wilmer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know you get tired of hearing me, but this is a situation that I, I had some questions. First question I have is why wasn't it included with the wastewater treatment plant? Can anybody tell me?
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Basically, it was much better to space it out, and at that time, we weren't sure which direction we were going, as you saw in the wastewater treatment plant, there was quite a few other projects for collection, the Lakeland, and this was Option D, and then you'll see that Option C that connects up to the north. It was decided that the city had enough financial on their plate to do, that they would leave this for future.
Thank you, Rhonda.
But I'm thinking if you'd have done it back in 2005, along with the wastewater treatment plant, it would have been much lower than $5 million. If you had the contractors in town, they were here working, it could have been done, but that's under the bridge. The second question I have is, I know you're talking about capacity, and just recently we heard that Genio is using 17% less water capacity. That's got to have an issue in it, compared to 2005, to what the water capacity, that does change. So, and that's just another item that I had. One thing I would recommend to the council is that, I'm not against the project, I don't think the timing is right. Wilmer has a lot of priorities, and this is one of them. But is it number one? I don't think so. We have railroad crossings that people have been talking about for probably 20 years. We've been talking about this for five years. We have flooding problems that we've been talking about for 20 years. Again, this is five years. I still say, keep your credibility, and stop the local option sales tax, sunset it in September, which is early, if you could do it now. You can put that excess money, over $8 million, into the general fund, and you could fix those railroad crossings, and still have $4 million left over probably, if you're going to collect $5 million. But it won't be that high, but you're still going to be able to fix all the railroad crossings if they're 250,000 apiece like they say they are, and fix four of them for a million dollars, and you probably already got a million dollars over, $2 million over. Because, why, I don't know, but city finance did not release the local option sales tax funding. There hasn't been one since June 30 of last year. I would think as a council, you would want to know how that is every month, or every two months, at least. But to let it go for almost a year without knowing what's in there, what's been spent, just doesn't seem right to me, as a council, not wanting to know that stuff. I've got a lot of other questions, but mainly, it's being built for the industrial park, we've been told. I think Rhonda is telling me that it needs to be built to help the northern part of town. If you would have mentioned that more, because you're mainly talking about the industrial park, because that's where it is. What businesses are coming in? How many new businesses are we going to have in the next five to 10 years? I would almost put money on it that you're not going to have more than two of that. And how much land is available in the old industrial park? I think there's quite a bit of land between the old zombie building, now Northern States, and the water plant. There's a lot, there's land there, land going back towards Walco. I think there's a lot of land out there yet that can be utilized. And I know this is a big project. I stay set on it, wait till the FAA makes their decision, and you've already done things out there that are illegal, but it's all right, as some councilmen say. And that's probably why they're being a little obstinate about it, is you've already put a bunch of infrastructure in there, I think that June report said close to $6 million. So, I just stay set on it for a while. Do they have to make a, can they make a resolute tonight, Kevin? Or do they have to have a majority?
Resolution to get the March 4 deadline needs to be tonight.
If they can do it with a vote of five?
Yes, sir.
They can, okay. It doesn't have to be like the road project. Okay. So then, you will be voting on it tonight, I didn't know that until just now. But I would seriously consider moving it up. If you do move it up, put it in your resolution that if the total bid come in over 5.2 million, you go back to the drawing board. The second thing I say is, I ask, is was this project put out for bid? We have other engineers in town that would like to work for the city, and was this put out for bid in a proper fashion? I just say, be careful, let's take care of the problems we have now. Our streets really need help. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else care to, Laura?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, citizens at large. My name is Laura Becker, and I live at 1010 Candy, Ohio Avenue Southwest. I have just a few questions in regards to this issue, and actually, I did not come this evening even prepared to address you. First of all, my first question pertains to the fact that the residents that live out in the Voss Park area, Rhonda, you referred to the Western Interceptor being out in that area, will those homeowners then be assessed for both the reconstruction project this summer and the Western Interceptor? No? Okay. I have some questions in regards to legal issues on the land. We currently are, have unresolved legal issues in regards to the new wastewater treatment plant, and my concern is, is that we could also have legal issues in regards to land acquisition for this Western Interceptor. My next question has to do with, have we heard back from the keeper in regards to the response of, for the release on the FAA land?
No.
Okay.
No?
No, we haven't? Okay. I guess, to me, that would be a huge issue in regards to whether or not you proceed with this issue. If you do not have clear use of that land, why would you pursue this and look at spending more dollars out there? I would also ask the question in regards to how many people are interested in the land at the old airport site in regards to the industrial park? Not just talking about it, but let's be realistic here, in the economic times that we're facing, you really have to have some serious interest, because they'd be looking at spending a lot of money out there. I do also want to reiterate, like John, the city has many current issues to be addressed. We are looking at, obviously, lots of snow, road conditions, stormwater issues that John said have been going on for 20 years. I can tell you, I've had people personally tell me they've been going on for 60 years. It is an issue that the city council does need to seriously address. The train noises as well, and be visionaries, take the blinders off, look at all options. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else care to talk publicly? Seeing none, now close the public hearing and open it to the council for questions? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rhonda, on the connection fee, is that the same as the tapping fee that we're talking about? You'd mentioned, there's a 2,820 possible connections to this.
Tapping fees is for each property owner, is this be more of the larger connection? Here's a separate, a different fee in your ordinance for tapping.
Would you explain that to me then, the 2,820 times that amount, getting up to 6.8 million?
That is to reconnect, that's for the cost of interceptor sewers, that you have in your ordinance, to recover those costs of interceptor sewers. A tapping is just when you connect to the system.
Right.
And I, isn't there a separate tapping? I thought there was. I don't have, I should have brought the ordinance with me. I don't.
Well, tapping fees apply to situations where someone may come along at a later date, tap into a utility that they were not initially assessed for.
I can say, I'm getting, what I'm getting at, is, are you saying that the 2,820 connections will result in 6.8 million in revenue, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
That's what I thought it was, but it, it wasn't clear to me.
It'll recover the cost of the project, plus the interest that you've had on the project, because, you know, a lot of this area right now is not part of the city limits, and before you provide sewer, you annex them into the city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Almond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Rhonda, for the explanation and the presentation, I'm sure took some time to put together, and I appreciate you doing that for us. We're not engineers, and we have to rely heavily on your services, and with Holly, and, and staff. Some of the concerns brought up here, you talked about the capacity problems that we have right now. Have we, as far as the city goes, or Public Works Department, had a problem with, with overflow in that area, or any of these areas where we have capacity in the northern, by the Western Interceptor north side? Is still handling it, and how much percentage do we still have left to meet maximum capabilities?
Mayor, Councilmember Almond, that's a good question. You are very fortunate, you have a very good maintenance staff. They know that the wet wells out there usually run pretty full during normal weather. They go out and pump them when they hear a prediction for wet weather. So you have not had an overflow. If you did, you would have a huge fine from the Pollution Control Agency. But because of their staff maintaining it, and going out there and pumping the wet wells before heavy rain events, you don't have that overflow.
So, what, what percentage are we at capacity, beyond capacity, or under capacity at maximum flow right now?
The Highway 12 lift station is at capacity.
Highway 12 is, okay. And what's wrong with the lift station? Lift stations are working, the current ones we have now are working properly.
Well, the one that's, they pointed up on, on the north side there, Foot Lake, Westwood Court, that has some problems, and as we talk about the Orton Blatt Arby's, the pumps from there will be relocated up to the Westwood Court lift station to help with the pumping issues that they have up there.
Okay. Is there any way that we can, I'm somewhat, somewhat reluctant to, to proceed with such a large infrastructure project, based on some of my own opinions, and some of those mentioned here tonight, and by other people I've talked in the community, put that much infrastructure in can light the cart before the horse. I'm pro-development, I'm pro-business, and, and pro-labor for creating jobs, too. But what the infrastructure was going to cost us, what would happen if somebody came in today, and came into Bruce Peterson's office and said they wanted to put a wet facility in with, or a dry facility, what would be their options if, if the airport land was What would be the timeframe to, to put the Western Interceptor in, short term, rather than going through this process? If we came into a situation where a person would come into town and wanted to put something in immediately, and we needed to put a larger interceptor in, if we had to fast-track it, could we get it done in six months?
No.
The problem is also the financing. Right now, you're actually at a perfect time to try to get the PFA loans. They are, they're on a fiscal year, so they become available July 1. And we are already on the PPL list, you have been for a couple of years, you stay on that as long as you can. It's getting to what they call the intended use plan, that's where you have to submit the facility plan, have that approved, and then you submit for the intended use plan. You have one year to use those funds, to apply for the loan and use the loan. If you don't, then you got to reapply every year for that. And depending upon how many other projects throughout the state are, if those funds are available to use.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, you can't think in terms of fast-tracking a project like this through the Public Facilities Authority. What we're talking about tonight is submitting a facilities plan to get on a funding list. Absent the council's action to do that, we won't be on any funding list. So if we, all of a sudden, had a major industry come into town and we had to fast-track it, we'd be looking at financing it ourselves through the sale of revenue bonds or some other resource. And it would cost us more money. We're not going to be able to sell general obligation bonds or revenue bonds for what we can finance a project like this through the Public Facilities Authority. I can think of no reason not to follow through with submitting this to the PFA. It is not obligating you to do anything more than get on a funding list.
Well, I agree with you 100%, Mick, on that, on that particular issue, as far as submitting it, but when it's going to be done, or when the project's going to be done.
Well, that's another question.
That's another question, too. And I know we talked about this before at the meetings, but if somebody would come in, we could put in a lift station if we had to, a temporary lift station, correct?
And, or bring it to where? Because you're going to bring-
Bring it to a temporary, temporary solution to the, to the problem at hand until the project came into play.
But that would bring it back east, and that whole drainage area, from what I said, basically, we're, from Counter Road 5 over to the lift station, that system is at capacity. So you have to build a, first, a holding tank, and probably drain it at night or something, because that, that, the, the system to the east can't take it, unless you're going to do a force main all the way down to the Southern Interceptor. That can take the, but the system to the east is at capacity. That can take the, but the system to the east is at capacity.
No, I guess. Just one other comment in conclusion. This isn't an issue of wanting the project and doing things right, which obviously presented it very clearly, that it is, it would be the best way of planning for the future of the community, long-term wise. There's no doubt, it's hands down. My question is the expense at this time. And if a individual or a company came in, wanted to come into Wilmer, they don't just come in overnight, they do the research. It takes a year of planning to put up the building, depending which one, what type of building they have. It isn't just like it was in the 1980s, where we had companies coming up or starting up a business here and closing it three or four years later after they got the benefits from the state on taxation, leaving the state of Minnesota. That isn't, that isn't going on right now, and I don't see this significant growth happening right now. I wish it would. But I guess, in that philosophical terms, I'm going to leave it at that, Rhonda, and I thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Reese, do you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I guess, to address some of that on my side, Councilmember Almond, is the ability for the city to even be able to recruit those industrial producers to our city. And right now, I think, you know, you've got to have it in place to be able to, you've got to have the incentives and the recruitment tools to be able to get those businesses to come to town. And right now, the cost of construction, I don't think you're going to see it any lower because of the competition for the bids. And it was the same thing we had with our wastewater treatment facility. And for us to not move ahead, sometimes we're accused of being shortsighted. I think we would be shortsighted in not moving ahead. So I would introduce the resolution for submittal of the facilities plan to the NPCA.
Second.
A resolution has been introduced to approve this middle of facilities plan for the western interceptor sewer project through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Resolution carries.
I think what we'll do is we'll have a public forum, and then if we can recess for five minutes and give everybody a little break, but is there, did you get a list of things, of people that wanted to speak?
Yes, sir. Are taking recess?
No, we'll take a recess after the public forum. Okay, the public forum is the next item on the agenda, and is there an Arlen Rosner? Did I say that right?
I signed in late in the morning, I signed in just to speak on the project.
All right.
Like I said, this is the first time here for me.
Perfect, well, thank you for coming. Nancy, did you want to speak for us?
Nancy Street, my business is at 1112, Lake Avenue Northwest. Part of my comments tonight have to do about the recording of the committee meetings also. After hearing Laura Becker's comment about, at the community development meeting, I totally agree with her, that your minutes may be stated somewhat what is said at those committee meetings, but they're not accurate, especially when it comes to the minutes on the last finance committee meeting. Mr. Schmidt said at that meeting that it is not the city's job to help people with the applications. I never asked for help in my application. I asked questions on clarifying responses from the city assessor, which I never received. So as to Chairman Anderson's comment, that the council and staff would do what they could to assist in the application process for the coming year, I don't understand that because of Mr. Schmidt's comment. And Mrs. Erickson was not even going to do anything with my current application, she said that at the meeting. She said, I mean, she said she was just going to hold on to it. It's been over three years dealing with this issue. Last week, I met with the county assessor to try to get some of my answers clarified, and after 10 minutes, he answered all my questions. And in four days, I had a decision, not two and a half years. I'm so glad that my application is out of the city's hands, and now in the hands of the county. What is not fair, but as, I guess how the law works, is now that I proceed to take my issue to tax court for the 2010 application, I'm not taking the city of Wilmer to court, I have to take the Kandoy County to court, the people who helped me. I don't want to take the city of Wilmer to court, I mean, sorry, but I will, I think, see the city of Wilmer in a different court. As to the city not helping with the applications, I find it interesting that that same week, the Wilmer Stingers got help with an application from the city, plus two legislators, on getting stronger beer. And in addition, you members of the council, sorry, Mr. Christensen, you are the only one excluded from this comment, you did come and ask me questions. If you had questions about my purely public charity, you could have asked me instead of listening to rumors or receiving inaccurate information. Remember, you are elected by the city of this, the people in this city, you do not work for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Let's take a short recess, can we reconvene here in five minutes? Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. We'll go to item number 10 on the agenda, the Finance Committee report. Councilman Anderson? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public forum, and there was no one there to speak to that subject. The next item was the First Step Childcare Center request, and we've heard from Ms. Street already, but she was there with First Step Childcare Center, and she wanted to discuss with us the question of property tax exemption under the 501(c)(3) not-for-profit program. Her assertion was that as a 501(c)(3), the childcare center should be exempt from local property taxes. Our city assessor, Pat Erickson, was there to explain the reasoning behind the city's denial of the tax exempt request. She cited Minnesota Department of Revenue Property Tax Rules and Regulations, and Ms. Erickson explained the childcare centers, "Not associated or affiliated with churches or government organizations must meet criteria for institutions of purely public charity." In other words, the 501(c)(3) may exempt from property taxes if they meet all of the following factors, and there's a number of them. Number one, the undertaking is to be helpful without immediate expectation of material reward. Number two, whether the institution is supported by material donations, gifts, or government grants for services to the public. Number three, whether a material number of recipients of the charity receive benefits or services at reduced or no cost. Number four, whether the income received produces a profit that is not distributed to private interests. Number five, whether the class of persons to whom the charity is made available is one having reasonable relationship to the charitable objectives. And finally, number six, whether dividends in former substance or assets upon dissolution are not available to private interests. In the opinion of the city and the Minnesota Department of Revenue, the First Step Childcare Center did not meet those criteria, and the application was subsequently denied. Was denied. We had a little bit of a discussion on the city's Job Z program, and we did assure Ms. Street that although the city could not arbitrarily approve a request for exemption, the city council and staff would do what they could to assist in the application process for the coming year. We thanked her for her attendance at the meeting, that was for information. The third item was the 2011 preliminary street improvement budget. Staff presented the 2011 street improvement program preliminary budget. The estimated $2,419,000 program will be revised at a later date to reflect the actual project's amounts and related costs. Following a discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approving, adopting the preliminary budget as presented.
Second.
A resolution has, or a motion has been made to adopt the resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
We then took up the next item, and that was, staff presented a resolution of certification to reimburse for costs incurred prior to the sale of bonds to finance those 2011 street improvements. This is pretty much standard operating procedure. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Second.
A motion has been made to adopt the resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with the reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The next item had to do with the Western Collector. Finance Director Okens initiated a discussion of the Western Collector project, including the idea of three public financing scenarios using various percentages of the local option sales tax to finance some of the construction costs. The discussion included an analysis of the current loan program through PFA and PFA's position with regard to a second loan covering the Western Collector. It was a consensus of committee members that in the event the Western Collector moves forward as planned, the city should follow up with local legislators in an attempt to use unobligated original wastewater treatment plan loan proceeds as opposed to a second loan. And I just want to explain that maybe a little bit further. We have money left over in our original PFA loan that could pay for most, if not all, of the Western Collector. However, as the law stands right now, we can't use that money, we have to reapply, thus incurring all of the costs associated with reapplying for loans and perhaps a higher interest rate. So, that's why we thought it would make sense to have our local legislators see if they could do something for us on that. And in that regard... And in that regard, there is a resolution. It was at the end of the minutes. And I will introduce this resolution, and I'll read it. "Be it resolved that Senator Gimsey and Representative Vogel are hereby requested to introduce and secure a bill in the current legislative session allowing the city of Willmar to use unobligated funds from the Public Facility Authorities' Loan, number PFA-09-0043-R-FY10, to finance all or a portion of the Western Interceptor and Lakeland Avenue Utility Projects, which are currently included in the Public Facility Authorities' Project Priority List." And I'll introduce that resolution.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded for the resolution as stated. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The next item is to do with the Greater Minnesota Public Infrastructure Program Grant Application. This also has to do with the Western Interceptor. Staff presented to us a proposal to apply for a Greater Minnesota Public Infrastructure Program through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development as an option to reduce capital costs associated with the Western Collector project. Following a discussion of the details governing the Business Development Infrastructure Grant Program, there was a motion made, seconded and passed. And I would introduce a resolution authorizing staff to submit an application for up to $1 million grant through the Greater Minnesota Public Infrastructure Program through the Department of Employment and Economic Development.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution authorizing staff to submit an application for up to $1 million grant through the Greater Minnesota Public Infrastructure Program through deed. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The next item was claim approval by the governing board. Staff presented to us some information from the Office of the State Auditor regarding claim approvals by the governing body. A summary of claims paid on a bi-weekly basis is included in our council packets. And it was noted that many years ago, the council delegated claims approval to the Office of the City Administrator. Staff is recommending that the committee, to us, at the committee, that based on the state auditor's suggestions, claims approval review revert back to the council. That is that list of checks that are played, are paid. It's been in the back of the packet before. You noticed today it was in the front. And that's what we would be just approving in the consent agenda. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed. And I would move the recommendation of the committee. The claims revert back to the city council and be included under the approval section of the city, or of the council consent agenda.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the claims revert back to the city council and to be included under the approval section of the council consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Final item was we took a look at the January Rice Trust Report, and that was for information only. Unless there's questions that we're going to file these minutes.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the, to file the minutes of the Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have the Public Works Committee. Councilman Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda was some requests for parking modifications for two specific areas in our downtown area. One was for a handicap parking space in front of the Medical Supply Store, which is in the Heritage Square Building. And would be granted, which will be granted. And the other for hospital laundry service at 409 Benson Avenue to remove parking on the opposite side of the street, which would not be granted. And this was for information only. The second item was a construction agreement in regards to Highway 12 East. And it covers the city's share of the cost to adjust water and sewer facilities on that section from Sixth Street East to west of the junction of US 71. And the state is going to let a contract for a mill and overlay for this upcoming construction season. And Al Rice from MINDOT was at our meeting. He explained the project. It will require the adjustment of our sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main facilities, the valves and the manholes. The agreement appoints the state as the city's agent to design and construct the adjustment work as part of that project. And the estimated cost to the city is $7,957.75. I would introduce a resolution to approve the agreement as presented and authorize the mayor and city administrator execute on behalf of the city.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution, to approve the agreement, I'm sorry, as presented and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute on behalf of the city. Any further discussion?
Question? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to last approximately how many years? How long? Does anybody know?
He thought 12.
About 12 years? And the plan that we had back in the 90s that was laid out in Public Works with the four lane, with exit lanes and a road, passage layer lanes on each side for frontage roads, that's been pushed off the wayside due to funding, I'm assuming. But this is a magical question, sorry. Rather than put all that infrastructure in right now, wouldn't we be better off just going with a light overlay or a little, a mill, a re-milling or a microseal? And maybe in three or four years, things will turn around and we can get what we wanted in the first place since 1990?
Well, essentially, Mr. Amen, that's what they're proposing to do, a mill and an overlay. It, the plan that was proposed many, many years ago has not been moved off to the side. It has been removed from their agenda, period.
Do we know why?
Money. Or lack thereof.
I thought it was going to be, excuse me, but I just want to comment that that was a great, great plan for the future, another entrance into the community. And I just hate to see it just be thrown away like that. I know, I know you're into, it's into the political agenda, and we're looking at the state deficit, and they're trying to get by and do more with less also. But I, I just, I just hate to see that be abandoned. And I just wonder if there's any recourse or if the committee has talked about that to resurrect that idea, now that you said it's been buried.
It's been buried. I agree with you. It would be nice to do something like that. And I'm sure MINDOT officials are hoping that the economic situation reverses itself as well, that maybe 12 years is a little more realistic than three or four years. And hopefully, something bigger and better can happen at that time when we're going to have to deal once again with a road that is starting to deteriorate.
And if I remember it, a lot of the cost of that proposed project back in the 90s was the cost of land acquisition. In the meantime, or that was part of the, part of the project.
No, I think he suggested that there was probably sufficient right-of-way to do something more substantial in a two-lane.
Okay, and here's my question, thinking ahead. Are we established through our planning process, if a business does come in within the standard 12 or 15-year period, that we are not going to have a problem with land acquisition or plans to go ahead with that, the plan that's been dropped by the state right now?
All we could do at that point would be to deal with existing right-of-way and setbacks that we have on the books.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll let it go.
Now, Councilmember Amen, I share your same concerns I had. Before I even knew they were going to come with an agreement for costs of adjustment of our own infrastructure facilities, I had talked to Ms. Wilson and asked her if we couldn't have somebody at the meeting because I was concerned that they were just going to do an overlay and that this is one of the main entrances to our city, and I felt it needed some improvement. And I remembered that project. I just didn't remember how long ago it was. What was it? 90?
93.
93. And that really shocked me because it seemed like it wasn't that long ago. But it sounded to me like it's been permanently shelved. I think, I think what they're doing right now is, I don't know, Mick says 12. I thought it was like 15 years, but for life of the overlay, but it doesn't make any difference. It isn't a long-term fix nor an enhancement to the entrance to the city but in the economic times that we're in and the $6.2 billion that the state is facing and in budget shortfall, I think, I don't think we're going to see any allocations for that. So, I share your concerns.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda was, oh, I'm sorry.
We do need a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
I'm sorry, Kevin. The next item was a request from the Willmar Stingers, and they've come to the city expressing difficulty with purchasing 3.2 malt liquor in plastic bottles due to their ability to only order once per calendar year. Our city attorney, Mr. Ronning, reviewed their request, and the city cannot issue a strong beer license to a non-restaurant business without special legislation. Both Senator Gimsey and Representative Vogel have been approached to consider introducing legislation to allow strong beer licenses to teams of the Northwoods Baseball League. And both Senator Gimsey and Representative Vogel have requested a resolution of support for the proposed legislation from the city of Willmar prior to introducing the legislation. So, in light of that fact, I would introduce a resolution that offers that support in allowing, in allowing the baseball, Willmar baseball to serve strong beer at Totten Stadium.
Second?
A resolution has been introduced and seconded to offer a resolution to support allowing the Willmar baseball team to serve strong beer at the Totten Stadium. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
Your motion carries.
The next item was in regards to First Step Childcare and some drainage concerns. And this had been referred to the committee by the council. Nancy Streed, who was here tonight, was at our meeting and addressed questions of the committee. And the committee received correspondence from city staff and Ms. Streed describing activities that occurred related to drainage problems in and around our building. And it was a consensus of the committee that the issue was related to private lines and not city-owned storm sewers. So, that was for information only. Our city administrator, next item, our city administrator overviewed the Garfield School trade situation. And the Willmar School District has offered the property to the city in exchange for waiving street assessments at the Roosevelt School for the access onto 15th Avenue. The city hired Ingham and Associates to do a feasibility study. And this was reviewed by the city council. And the question that I brought up was a comparison of square footage. And the square foot area for the Garfield School is 28,768 square feet. And the total area for city offices, council chambers, and Rack 8, all-inclusive, is 25,940 square feet. Mick then presented the recent development of the building being nominated for the inclusion on the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota's Annual 10 Most Endangered Historic Places List. Such an inclusion would place remodeling restrictions on the building that would not be favorable to the city. The committee discussed the matter. There was a motion made to contact the school district and offer that the city is not in a position to assume ownership of the facility, but would be interested in the green space on the south half. And I would move the recommendation to the committee.
Second?
A motion has been made, the recommendation to the committee to contact the Willmar School District and offer that the city is not in a position to assume ownership of the facility, but would be interested in the green space in the south half.
Mr. Mayor? I heard this morning that the Preservation Alliance has apparently opted not to include the Garfield Building on their endangered historic places list. I haven't been able to confirm that, and I don't know if it in any way will impact the council's decision tonight. But I thought I should mention that apparently has taken place.
Has it ever been passed on to the school district? I mean, have they received an offer from the city?
No, not up to this point, no. The motion tonight would direct us to contact the school indicating that we weren't interested in the building, but certainly interested in the green space to the south. I guess based on all the discussion and studies that we've had in the last several months, I think that's probably a good motion.
And is that what the motion is?
Yes, sir.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next item was an amendment to the Municipal Code, Section 15, on parking violations. And our police chief, Mr. Wifels, was there. And he gave us some information relating to the amendment to the code. And in Section 1, fine amounts have been adjusted to reflect the recommendation of city staff, along with updates to several other areas. And I would make a motion, it says resolution, but it's a motion, to introduce an ordinance to amend Section 15 of the Municipal Code for hearing.
Second?
Go ahead, Steve, Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify, in your proposed ordinance, there's a typo. Somewhere there talks about a subdivision 4, and we'll amend that to subdivision 5 of the Minnesota statute. And then have it properly published. I just thought I'd point that out. Pretty minor.
Okay, so there's still a motion? I mean, a motion as compared to a resolution?
Yes. Yes, this is a motion just to set the hearing, and we'll hold the hearing March 7th at 7:02 PM.
That motion has been introduced, and if, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next item was the January monthly report from Donahue and Associates on activities for the month of December. At the wastewater, new- At the wastewater, new wastewater treatment plant relocation. And the program management activities included the submittal of pay request number 16 for the 30-year loan to PFA for Clean Water Revolving Fund and pay request 16 to the PFA for American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Donahue and Associates continues to provide information for the city's asset management, maintenance, and operation program. Work continues on gravity collection piping and forced main piping costs. Donahue and Associates is also assisting legal counsel and city staff to provide information on property acquisition for the Western Collector and Lift Station decommissioning projects. Projects 813D3, 814D4 are substantially complete. Contractors are currently working on punch list items. Project 815D5 was approved for final project acceptance and final payment in September and project 816D6 was approved on January 19th. And all systems at the wastewater treatment facility are operational. The contractor continues working on those punch list items and post-startup services and all of our training is complete. The contractor for project 217, or 1017B is progressing and they have installed temporary heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, completed the gas line relocation, installed equipment at the admin building, and the fiberglass covers from the RBCs were hauled out and several buildings have been demolished. Equipment and processed piping are being removed from the Fine Screen Building. The next item was in regards to a hearing for the Western Collector. And Rhonda Ray from Donahue and Associates informed the committee that the public hearing on the facilities planned for the Western Interceptor Sewer Project would take place at the council meeting February 22nd. Then we discussed the decommissioning of the Ortenblatt and Arby's Lift Station and Rhonda Ray, Donahue and Associates, informed the committee that the public has been invited to the council meeting for purposes of public informational meeting related to the decommissioning of both lift stations. So, Rhonda, I'll call on you this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reese and members of the committee. I'll try to make this accurate and brief. Basically, the decommissioning project has the, I'm just going to skip through this whole thing, here's what I was going to do tonight, just tell you what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the budget is. The project actually is two lift stations that are being decommissioned. The first one is the Ortenblatt one here located along 21st. The other one is, we call it the Arby, and it's located over here on 24th Southeast. The other, the third portion in the project is basically then connecting up the sewer area here to the Southern Interceptor, thereby eliminating that lift station. The Ortenblatt Lift Station decommissioning includes the top three feet of the pump station removed, the pump station will be backfilled and the concrete pad will be moved. The Wilmer Municipal Utility will remove the transformer and electrical services and all connections, all valves, all control panels, antennas, and the chain link fence and gate will be salvaged and turned over to the city. The pipe, basically, you're going to be putting, we're going to put in 18-inch down-to-12-inch pipe. There's over 140 manholes, there's wetland restoration, street restoration, and seeding to be done where the area has been constructed. The Arby's Lift Station, this one we will decommission down 10 feet just because it's along 24th Avenue Southwest here and you may want to do more utilities in that area in the future. The pump station will be backfilled with granular fill, the concrete pad removed. Again, all the electrical and control wiring will be removed by Wilmer Municipal Utility and all the valves, all control panels and antennas will be salvaged and turned over to the city for future use. There's two parcels that have been identified, we're actually through the negotiations and just needing to execute the next steps. That just, you know, shows the service and the flow you don't really care about. I don't care about, I mean, basically, it's taking that whole area that used to drain to the lift station and it would right now come back to where the existing plant is, then through the system. So, this will be a much shorter route. The engineering cost is $67,000. The construction engineering is $38,000. Construction is estimated at $400,078 for the total with land and legal and a contingency of 540, oh, I didn't push it that time. Oh, you wouldn't, I kind of got to the next one. I told you I was going to do it quick and short. The total construction comes to $556,858. This project, if you remember, we brought before you to use the remaining fund of PFA loan. They have, the Minnesota Police Control Agency has approved the change order so that we can use existing loan funds as decommissioning under the existing loan. So, that's how this project is to be funded. With that, the next steps is just to finish the acquisition, the plans in March, call for bids in April, open the bids in May, council authorize the bidding and enters into the contract May 16th, and we hope to be substantially complete with the project by July 31st of this year. That is really a tight schedule, but this way it'll also help with closing up the loan and all the other documents. It'll be ending with the rest of the wastewater treatment facility project. On that, any questions or concerns?
I'll just give you one jam. All night you've been referring to the existing wastewater treatment plant. I think it's the non-existing wastewater.
You're right. The old plant, now the maintenance facility.
Right.
Walked through there today. It's getting to look quite nice, doing the punch list on the admin building.
All right, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
That was for information only.
Okay.
All right, so we'll go on to number 10 and that is in regards to a construction management agreement with Donahue for the decommissioning of the Ortenblatt and Arby's Lift Stations for design plans and specs and carry us through the bidding process. The city's in need of engineering assistance for the construction management portion of the project. Donahue has agreed to carry the project through construction at an additional cost of $38,080. It was staff's recommendation to enter into the, an agreement with Donahue rather than solicit for an engineering firm not familiar with the project. So, I would introduce a resolution to enter into that agreement for construction management for project 1109B2 with Donahue and Associates for an amount not to exceed $38,080 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
A resolution has been made, or motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution of 1109B2. Further discussion. Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
If the council will recall, we had some discussion here some time ago in regards to LED street lighting. I had gotten, received some emails that the technology had advanced to the point that we maybe should take a look at it again. The committee had Jeff Kipling from the MUC at our meeting and he addressed the committee in regards to the LED lighting. And the new LED lights have surfaced targeting streetlights and appear similar to the Cobra Heads. That's the kind of streetlights that we have now. The price is still high, $600 to $800 per unit for the lowest light output and the MUC is discussing placing money in next year's budget to purchase several to experiment with in an existing residential area. So, that was for information only. That's the end of the minutes, Mr. Mayor. Unless there's questions, I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. You'll have to help me with the second one now. The community development meeting chair and vice chair are both absent tonight.
Dennis Anderson sat in for the vice chair.
Very much. Okay. First item on our agenda were public comments and Mr. Sullivan raised questions about the Western Interceptor project and David Herzer requested that the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission meetings be televised and that more commission information be available to the public. Laura Becker questioned the need for the Western Interceptor Sewer and called for more accuracy in recording meetings. Mary Anish spoke about the cost of televising meetings. The next item was flood insurance and that was for information only. Staff provided information about the National Flood Insurance Program and the mandatory insurance requirements for mortgage holders in designated flood zones. That requirement requires a financial obligation for property owners who may not be in an area that is subject to flooding. The estimated cost for that type of insurance is somewhere between $8,000 and $3,000 a year. It was noted that the council had consistently held that the desires of many outweigh the needs of a few and that they would not participate in the program as long as unaffected property owners may be facing some undue, undue financial obligations. The next item was a design center activity. Bev Doherty presented information about design center activities. A document reviewing the 2005 to 2010 goals and activities were reviewed and discussed. The top priority for 2011 is the opening of Litchfield Avenue. Operations continue to be funded by a mixture of public and private monies. The committee briefly discussed the possible opening of Litchfield Avenue and the proposed historic designation of the Lakeland Hotel Building. The next item had to do with Central Business District inspections and that's also for information only. The committee discussed inspection activity in the Central Business District including building rental and zoning inspections. Building official Randy Cardell described recent construction activities and reviewed a list of residential rental properties in the Central Business District. A handout was reviewed that included a Central Business District residential unit count and a recap of zoning enforcement. Staff explained the permitting and inspection procedures for residential development or conversion. The committee discussed building occupancy and maintenance and the need to review standards to ensure better downtown development in the future. The next item was the Utilities Power Line Corridor Agreement Amendment. Staff informed the committee that a correction to the 2005 Transmission Line Agreement between Wilmer Municipal Utilities and the city of Wilmer was needed. The agreement had been approved by both parties to allow a section of a 69 KV line to cross the former airport property. There was an error in the original legal description concerning the width of the Transmission Line Corridor. Jeff Kipling from the MUC presented a drawing and reviewed the agreement to show where the correction was needed. It was noted that the description needed to be written so there was a 100-foot wide corridor described by a center line. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to adopt approving the change in the legal description as proposed.
Second.
Motion has been made to adopt the resolution approving the change in the legal description as proposed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The next item was the Western Interceptor Timing. Staff presented a position paper supporting the prompt construction of the Western Interceptor Sewer. Committee discussed the future development of the expanded industrial park, including the timing and financing for infrastructure. That was for information only. The next item was Planning Commission Activity, also for information. Staff presented an update on Planning Commission Activities, including zoning ordinance revisions, consideration of design standards for the Central Business District, and miscellaneous text amendments to achieve comprehensive plan consistency. Councilmember Aman suggested that the Planning Commission consider adding a green development standards to the zoning ordinance. Item number eight, Airport On-Site Management and Maintenance. The committee discussed a recommendation by the Airport Commission that the city contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation to provide onsite management and maintenance services at a minimum of 20 hours per week. Maximum Cruise had previously subcontracted with Eric Runnigan to provide these services. When that contract expired, the city pursued a contract directly with Mr. Runnigan that was not accomplished due to his liability insurance issues. The previous contract with Maximum Cruise was for approximately $14,000 a year. They are now requesting $20,000 a year. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce the motion to enter into a contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation for the year 2011 for airport onsite management and maintenance services at a rate not to exceed $20,000 a year prorated over the balance of 2011.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to enter into a contract with Maximum Cruise Aviation for the year 2011 for the airport onsite management and maintenance services at a rate not to exceed $20,000 per year prorated over the balance of 2011. Further discussion?
Mary Anish, we're going to turn that into a resolution because it is a contract. So, we'll take a roll call after discussion.
But is there any further discussion? I, this might not be the proper time and place, but I'd like, we're talking about maintenance. Did you hear any more about what you were talking about, Mick, with the part-time and the full-time?
With regard to our own maintenance issues?
Yes.
I'd be glad to discuss that with the council following your agenda here tonight.
Okay. Wow, roll call.
Councilmember Aman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Resolution carries. The next item was an EDC grant. Staff presented a request from the Economic Development Commission for a resolution of support for a grant application. The EDC is applying for a grant in partnership with the Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center at MinWest Technology Campus for renewable energy, commercialization, and workforce training. This will be a training center that will offer workforce development and online learning through the University of Minnesota, St. Cloud State, and Ridgewater College. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution of support for the grant application.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution, that the council adopt the resolution of support for the grant application. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
The final item on the agenda had to do with the church demolition. Staff informed us that the demolition at the Manheim Church was substantially complete. Councilmember Christiansen inquired about filling the site to a level that would prevent runoff containing granular material from leaving the site. Staff told the council that they were pleased with the efforts to remove the church even though it took longer than anticipated. The project was ultimately able to be accomplished without the city having any direct costs or future financial obligation. That was the work of the committee, Mr. Mayor, and unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee.
Comment, Mr.
All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, more discussion?
Just one question. I think it's important to note, the Wilmer Design Center, Bev was there and gave us a revenue and expenses clarification on what the amount of money the City of taxpayers are investing in. Wilmer Design Center, what are we getting in return? Just for public information, on a $40,000 investment in 2007, we received a little over $120,000 with grants. So I guess it's important for me to express this among that committee that with the money we are investing, we have more than doubled the funds that we receive from grants and other jurisdictions for development of the downtown area, and I think that's important to be recognized. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Or is this a resolution?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of a Civic Center Arena Special Event Permit by On-Sale Liquor License Holder, Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery. And Kevin, if you want to cover that for us?
Mary Janisch, members of the council, we have before you a permit requesting that the two-day novice banchspiel have the ability to serve alcohol. The Wilmer Curling Club is sponsoring this using the license of Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC, and the employee on-site would be Janet Chapin. It's staff's recommendation that we approve this permit for this March 11th and March 12 event.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and approved, or seconded to approve the liquor license permit for the Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery on March 12?
11th and 12th tonight.
11th and 12th, and this is a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries. Resolution carries. Item number 14, Consideration of Request to Vacate a Portion of Pacific Avenue Southwest and Eighth Street Southwest by Wilmer New, even in Nestle Utilities. Bruce, do you want to cover that for us?
Mary Janisch, members of the council, with the recent purchase of land from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad by the utilities north of Pacific Avenue, they are now requesting the vacation of that portion of Pacific Avenue Southwest from Seventh Street to Tenth Street, and that portion of Eighth Street Southwest from Benson Avenue north to the railroad tracks. Their plans are to have temporary barricades at the end of each portion of the vacated streets so they can get their utilities trucks in and out of there, but their plans are to block public access. All of Eighth Street Southwest and Pacific Avenue Southwest will be retained as utility easements so that the city can protect its interest in its underground facilities as well as protect the interest of the private infrastructure.
Well, as per charter requirement, staff is recommending adoption of a resolution that we set a public hearing on this vacation for the council's March 21 meeting.
So move. Second. A motion has been made and seconded for a resolution to hold a public hearing for the vacation of the property on Pacific Avenue and Eighth Street at the March 21 meeting.
Standard motion.
Standard motion. All those in favor say aye.
No, it's a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
It is a resolution. Okay, then we do the roll call.
Even Kevin gets it wrong. That makes me feel better. We set him up.
Roll call. Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And then the motion carries, resolution carries. Announcement of council meeting, committee, committee, meeting dates. If we could have a finance committee.
Mr. Mayor, Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 28th at 4:45.
Monday, the 28th at 4:45. And Public Works?
No meeting scheduled.
No meeting scheduled. Community Development Meeting.
Bruce? I'd say no, but I don't know.
No meeting scheduled.
Labor.
Labor. No meeting is scheduled, Mr. Mayor.
No meeting scheduled. I do have one announcement here from Chief Wifel that there will be a COPS Community-Oriented Policing and Problem-Solving Meeting held on the first Tuesday of March, March 1st, at 7:00 PM at the Wilmer Fire Department.
The doors will be open.
We'll move into miscellaneous. Mr. Brizden, would you like to speak to us about the Hockey Association donation?
Mary Janisch, members of the council, we were fortunate to receive a memo from the Wilmer Hockey Association last week. Last summer, we worked with them and the Diamonds Edge Figure Skating Club to do summer ice, as we've done for the last number of years, and given their financial situation last summer and the number of skaters that they had ready to go on the ice, their numbers were down a little bit, so they worked with us on a reduced rate for that ice time last summer. And now that their winter season is almost completed, their financial situation has improved, and they sent a check to the city for $1,300 to help offset some of those costs from last summer's ice time. So, much appreciated. Big thank you goes out to the Wilmer Hockey Association on that gift.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept that and send them a letter of appreciation.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to send the Wilmer Hockey Association a letter of appreciation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
You can make one.
Holly, would you like to speak to us about the agreement on the airport?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We received a letter from the Office of Aeronautics for MINDOT regarding a capital improvement project for the airport for 2011, which would be crack repair and seal coating of the runway. And they are requesting to, for us to enter into an agreement with them to do that project this year as outlined in our five-year CIP program. We do have a 70-30% match on that project and have put in our budget the 30% match for that crack sealing project, and estimated cost for that is around $30,000.
There's two issues, Mr. Mayor. Number one, the MINDOT has requested that we respond prior to the end of this week, so we couldn't wait for a Public Works or future city council meeting, and we apologize for that, but the only way we can deal with the issue is tonight, one way or the other. Secondly, the, where do you get the remaining 70% of the funding? You know, we're in a stage now where whenever they talk to us about capital improvements at the new airport, they're wanting to deduct those state contributions from the $800,000 that they claim we owed them from their involvement at the old airport site. So essentially, anytime until we resolve that matter with aeronautics, either through negotiations, legislations, or paying off that agreed upon amount, they will continue to do that, deduct their share against what is owed, which means we need to come up with $20,000.
Twenty-one.
$21,000. We would propose to do that through the local option sales tax, which...
Is that what we decided?
The local option sales tax as part of our overall airport redevelopment program. As Holly mentioned, we only included in our 11 budget what we were anticipating to be the local share. And it needs to be done, I guess, you know? We can defer that maintenance, but I don't, I'm not so sure that would be the best approach.
Do we need a resolution? Do you?
I'll introduce that resolution as stated.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the resolution as stated. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay.
Resolution carries. Mick, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity. During my absence a couple of weeks ago, I was in contact with the office, and I hope Mr. Amen was involved in that conversation about the status of the Labor Relations Committee meeting, and I suggested that because of something being removed, the only thing left being on the agenda was the maintenance issue that we had talked about previously, had come to the council, and then we were going to discuss it again because we had indicated that we were having some difficulty with this situation. So I apologize for that in retrospect. I guess it probably would have been better to have that meeting so that we could have finalized this issue once and for all, but given this opportunity, and I thank you for that, I'm once again requesting that the city council lift its hiring freeze and allow us to proceed with hiring a full-time maintenance position. We have made every attempt, and we've explored numerous possibilities and options and alternatives, and in our opinion, none of them will allow us to accomplish the task at hand, which is to bring some stability and continuity to our maintenance program. As I explained previously at the Labor Relations Committee meetings, we have too maintenance personnel, and it's impossible for them to cover all of our building and land maintenance needs. The temporary solutions that we've looked at don't solve our problem because they don't give us that kind of stability that we need, that kind of dependability. We looked at part-time positions as well. We've looked, we've talked to local employment agencies. We've contacted people that applied for the position when it was advertised as a full-time position, and we have literally come to the conclusion that it is in the city's long-term, short-term, and long-term best interest to fill this position and bring our maintenance staff back up to a level that we would feel a little more comfortable with in dealing with our situation today. I'm not asking that the council lift the hiring freeze for all the positions that are currently vacant, simply the maintenance position at this time. I was going to ask that question, so, but with that answer to my question, I would make the motion to do so.
Are we talking, excuse me, are we talking about just one position?
Mr. Mayor, one full-time maintenance position.
I made the motion. I'm sorry.
If you don't have a second, you can't.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. No, that's fine. Okay. Motion has been made and seconded and now open for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's been doing this work in this interim period? How have we been getting it done? Well, a lot of it isn't getting done, but with regard to the community center, which was one of our primary focus areas, we contracted with a private cleaning service. The private cleaning service agreed to come in for a specific period of time each day, but they do not want to be involved with things like snow removal and setting up and taking down of the noon luncheon program, which is one of the more regular and mandatory tasks. They actually have quit, haven't they?
Tomorrow is their last day.
Tomorrow is their last day. They just, they don't want to do it anymore. One of them apparently found something else to do, and the other individual or individuals aren't interested in continuing. So we're having to make some adjustments and react rather rapidly to the situation. I think that the mayor and council may have even received a letter from the seniors encouraging you to reconsider. I don't know if that got to you yet or not.
Any other question? Councilmember Fagerly?
So couldn't you hire someone part-time there, three hours a day, to work that shift?
Well, as I mentioned earlier in my comments, we have tried to find people. We took applications for the full-time maintenance position, and we score our applicants. I don't know how scientific it is, but it's a process that we use. And from that scoring system, we selected 10 individuals to come in for interviews. When it was determined that the hiring freeze would remain intact, we contacted them to see if any would be interested in a part-time position, whether it was two, three, four, five hours. We have certain limitations about how many hours we can employ someone without incurring some benefit liabilities. Four indicated that they would come in and talk to us about the possibility. None are interested in the position if it doesn't include benefits.
These were people that applied for the job?
Yes.
Full-time?
Yes.
You haven't tried advertising for part-time?
Oh, we have. And as I indicated, we've talked to the employment agencies. They will provide someone for whatever hours we want. What's the cost?
It was $1,250 to $1,350 an hour.
Our starting salary for a full-time position is 10-something.
Well, I did some checking too the last few weeks, and people that are working part-time at different box stores as cleaning people are getting $725 to $950 an hour. And I told them about the city might be hiring part-time people, and they said, "Well, let me know, I'll be applying." So people are out there.
Well, that, the example you use is they already have a position. How difficult is it to, for them to juggle their schedule to meet our needs? And that's one of the, one of the things I was referring to when I talk about stability and consistency. And I, and when we, I don't know how many applicants we had for that full-time position, and I mentioned that we score them and rank them, and we interview the top 10. I mean, there's a reason some people don't score very high, and that reason will vary. I don't know that I, we would necessarily want to consider those folks. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that the, the starting wage is 10-something an hour. Is that include benefits also?
No, that's hourly salary.
That's just an hourly salary, so...
That's the number one step in the, in grade one of our system.
And the, it's a full-time position evidently. You want, you want them eight hours a day. What else will they be doing? I mean, you, you mentioned the senior center. I, I don't recall, maybe I was going on that meeting when you guys discussed this, but I don't recall the requirements. What's this person going to be doing? And is it for, open to men and women, or is it...
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
I mentioned at that Labor Relations Committee meeting that there are 10 city-owned facilities to maintain. I talked about the fire station, the community center, the city office building. Those were our primary concerns and considerations. In addition to that, we have the auditorium, the Public Works Garage, both the old admin building and the new at the wastewater treatment plants, airport, the rack aid offices, and once in a while, they help out at the Civic Center as well.
So this is utility person? I mean, they're going all over, all these?
Yes, we would.
Places?
We would work out a new schedule for three folks instead of two.
So right now, there's two of them handling all those duties?
Yes. When you take a situation like the other day when we got the heavy snowfall, and we have buildings that the roofs are in danger of leaking or sagging, and we've got people up, they have to respond, so we get them up on the roof, and they spend the day removing snow. Well, they don't get anything else done in any of their regular routine. It's those kinds of things that you just can't plan for.
I understand, but in the private sector, people are being told to suck it up and help out wherever you can. I mean, so it's just a fact of life, Mick, that these things are happening because of the economy, and that's why Rick's concern and my concern. I understand these things have to get done, but I just wanted to know a little more about what this person is going to do, and evidently, they're going to have to be pretty versatile. I mean, to jump around of these, is it, does it involve cleaning of these places too when you say maintenance, or is it...
Yeah, it's cleaning.
Basically cleaning, huh? And it's because we lost one? Or somebody...
We lost two.
Two of them. So there's two open positions?
Yes.
Presently, and we're trying to fill one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mick, I have a question, if I may. Is that, in your mind, would one person solve the problem? I mean, is that you wouldn't come back to us in six months and say, "I need another person"?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that by hiring one individual that, that will solve our problem. What I can tell you is that it will help immensely.
It's legit.
But I will guarantee you, I will not come back and ask for another maintenance position for the rest of, for the rest of my entire career.
Well said. He may apply for it. We're looking for a part-time person maybe after July.
Pardon me? Sure, there, you save some money that way.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
At the committee meeting, we had a motion, not a second, and now it's brought, being brought back up here, but we did ask, I believe the committee at that time asked you, Mick, if you could come back with some information on, or other options, and explore those other options to see if there are any other people out there. And what you're trying to tell me is that you were gone for a week and you were on vacation, but since that time, what has been done to address those concerns that we expressed to you at the meeting?
Oh, Mr. Amen, when you asked me to do that, I agreed to do so, and in fact, staff has compiled all of that information and was prepared to present it to the Labor Relations Committee on...
Wednesday. Last Wednesday.
Wednesday last, when, when it was canceled.
Yeah.
And they're still upset at me about that, but, you know, I, we weren't in close proximity and contact at the time, and I think my frustrations got the better of me. The situation at the community center where the cleaning service has pulled the plug on us, has created a new sense of urgency, and that's why I'm bringing it back tonight.
Thanks, Mick.
I will gladly share all of the research and the work that has been done prior to arriving at this recommendation.
We have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. It's just a motion?
Standard motion.
All those in favor of hiring, taking off the freeze for one person, maintenance person, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 Do you want to do roll call?
I have.
Or two? Or two? Motion carries, and so it has been lifted for one person.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn.